We are opening up the Selectmen's meeting on Monday, May 14, 2018. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We do have Crosby Road coming in at 7:30. Is there anything that you would like to talk about beforehand or think that we should chat about before?
Well, the cease and desist letter went out.
Yep.
Just a couple of points of clarification, which I will also make at the open.
Yes, yes, of course.
Is that.
You were in open meeting now, so.
At the actual hearing, I can make these also. Is the fact that the like-kind soils bylaw, general bylaw, does apply to residential.
That was certainly my feeling, yes.
So, the other bylaw regarding fill, which is import and export, that only applies to commercial, but this one does apply to residential also. So, that's just one point that should be cleared up.
Mm-hmm.
And then, the other kind of jurisdictional factor that we need to establish is the like-kind soil bylaw pertains to soil and fill being brought in from out of town.
Mm-hmm.
And it is, it's the applicant's burden to provide evidence that all of the fill came from within-town border, chain of custody, bill of lading, something. But, so that's really, if those, if that isn't met, then it applies, because we don't know where it came from.
Is it something that perhaps we should look at changing, so that we can look at the soil, whether it comes from within or from out of town?
It's actually, it's actually unusual to have a general bylaw that applies to some, you know, one general bylaw applies to commercial, and the other one applies to everything, including residential. I guess my suggestion would be to combine the two general, the two general bylaws, combine the two chapters. The like-kind soils bylaw, the general bylaw, is a very comprehensive bylaw that, you know, that really, environmentally friendly, really would protect the environment and make sure that people are not bringing in unsuitable soil.
Right.
Your other import and export, that actually requires a permit from the Board of Selectmen as to if they, if they are going to import or export a certain amount over, you know, over a certain amount. So, those could be combined.
Yep.
You know, with a subsection that only the like-kind soils portion, you know, applies to residential or something. But, it is something we may want to, we may want to think about.
Yep. That was, that was put together sort of in a bit of a rush when we had the maple wood issue. The Selectmen were trying to stay away from that a little bit, because we didn't want it to appear as if we were, you know, trying to change rules when things were. And, you know, and in fact, you know, the initiative really was from outside the Board of Selectmen, so we basically sort of let that, let that take its course. That, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And then, the only other thing that we had discussed in the context of another, with the Conservation Commission, when I was at their open meeting a couple of weeks ago, was that they would like to implement some kind of sign, checks and balances for internal, internal approvals. So, the building inspector doesn't give out a building permit unless the Board of Health has signed off on it, Conservation has signed off on it. That is, that is completely common with all town halls, albeit, it's harder with part-time staff or no staff. So, you know, it's a little bit harder, so I think we'd have to have it a little bit more flexible. I mean, the building, the building inspector can't, you know, can't hold up the permit just because he's waiting for a volunteer to, you know, come down and sign, but we could maybe work on something like that. And then, all of the boards, all of the land use boards at least, know what's going on, because most of the permits are connected.
I think they may have actually started working on something like that.
Oh, great. Okay. That's great, yeah. I thought that was a very good idea, coming out of the April meeting in Concombs.
Yep. All right. Okay. So, now we'll get on to the normal agenda. We have meeting minutes for the May 7th and May 8th open sessions. Chris and Lisa were the only ones in attendance. Have you had a chance to review them?
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And Mary, is this just for the mileage? Okay. So, it's reimbursement for 76 miles, and this was to the Mass Buys Expo.
Mm-hmm.
It's in the amount of $41.42. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Gotcha. All right. We have a motor vehicle fiscal year '17 refund in the amount of $17.50. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a motor vehicle fiscal year '18 refund in the total amount of $709.47. This runs to 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, to 10 recipients.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have a personal property '18, fiscal year '18 refund in the amount of $3.33.
Ooh. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
No.
All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was momentarily stuck on the $3.
Yes, me too. Next, we have a real estate fiscal year '18 refund in the amount of $11,254.48, and that runs to 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, to six recipients variously.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item that we have is approval of permission to the Berlins Country Run 2018 road race, June 16, 2018, starting at 9:00 a.m. And I presume that the police, fire, and highway have all signed off on this. They're okay? All right.
Second page.
Oh, yes, we now have the new, okay. The motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Just note for people, this is certainly my first experience, but we have now a new application for these kind of special events.
I didn't get any feedback, so I'm assuming everything.
Yeah. So, just to let you know, we have one, if you have an event planned. All right. Otherwise, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you skip over Conservation?
No, that's the next one. This one?
Okay. Yep.
The Webjo signing documents? Yes, I, actually, I was going in the order in which they were stacked rather than the order on the agenda, but we have that next. Okay?
Yep.
All right. We have settlement statement for Webjo. This is the Lyman Road purchases that are close to the Mount Pizga property, intended to it, so. This is for a purchase price of $375,000, less recording fees of 75, so 374, 925. Suite 74 is a purchase price, 75, to the registry of deeds. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
No.
All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, collect them all three together right here, and then we'll pass them along. Let's see.
That's a separate parcel.
Hmm? Yep.
Okay.
The second parcel is $55,000.
Just the one I just signed?
Yep. Yep. So, those. Again, recording fees of $75,000, check to the seller of 54, 925, and 75 of recording fees to the, any records? So, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, the exception to deed on that same thing. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I spoke to the, on the same subject, I spoke to the treasurer and the accountant this afternoon, and.
Son.
I did.
You did?
Yeah.
Pale. It will, I'll probably be gone tomorrow. I just burnt easily.
Yeah. Sorry. Go ahead.
It's okay.
All right. Anyway, I talked to the treasurer and the accountants, and as I think people knew, I think from last week when I was out, that we, we have monies coming in from a state grant that should be coming in within the month or so, but we need to pay these amounts now, so the treasurer will go out for short-term borrowing.
Okay.
To cover that, that gap. We will vote again when they actually, because they're going to do State House notes, so we will vote again and more officially for that. But, I did say that I would run it by the Board of Selectmen tonight, just so that we could record our, you know, concurrence with going ahead and doing the short-term borrowing.
And as long as the treasurer and the accountant are both happy?
Yes, they are.
All right.
Yep.
All right.
So, you know, just a motion to indicate our concurrence with that course of action.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions on that?
No.
All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're going to keep chugging along until 7:30 and try to get a lot of the daily things out, the weekly things out of the way. All right. So, next, we have a request to the Hudson Board of Selectmen. We have a situation on Dudley Road where a great deal of carpeting was, had been dumped in the wetlands, and volunteers had pulled it. That was green carpeting, but.
Right. Kind of bright green, I think.
Okay.
Astro turf.
Yeah, yeah. Astro turf?
Yes.
Okay.
Yards and yards of it.
All right. They've hauled it out of the wetlands, and they've lined it up on the side of the road. It is located in Hudson, and so this is a request to Hudson to remove what has been pulled out of the wetlands.
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
So, I'm just curious. I believe they've been spoken to before what happens if nothing happens based on this.
I don't know if they've been spoken to concerning this, have they?
So, according to the neighbors who are there, they called Berlins. Berlins said it's in Hudson. They called Hudson. Hudson said it's in Berlins. So, this has been about five years that this has been going on.
Five years?
Really?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I would say.
I mean, it's worth a shot. I was just curious.
Yeah.
I would say it's worth a shot.
I was going to actually ask the same question.
I don't really, I don't want to speculate alternate realities until we're faced with them.
I think, yeah, I thought it might be worth one more try, however, I didn't know it was that long.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, let's try it one more try.
Okay.
And then, we'll address the situation that we have, if it's still there.
Our highway superintendent was positive it is in Hudson, but regardless.
Yeah. And it does come.
Yeah, and I think the entrance of Dudley Road is in Hudson.
It is. It is. It does come a point when it's not a patch of astroturf we want to die on, we just want to get rid of it.
You just want it gone, right? Such is kind of why, yeah.
So, let's take one, let's take one last shot at this, and then, okay, then we will take another approach to getting rid of it, you know?
Yep.
Okay. So, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How are you, Mr. McAlk?
Doing well, thank you.
All right.
Can we, Lisa, to sign that one?
Oh, yes. All right. I think, actually, I'm looking at the other stuff. Let's jump for now. I mean, I, the marble scholarships, the ECA contract, the community grant, I think all of those are going to take, you know, more than four minutes to discuss, as is the ACO. So, let's jump to 11. We've had a request from Mary to attend Chief Procurement Officer training. She and I spoke about it this afternoon briefly, as we were putting the agenda together. I think it's a good idea. She says that she, you know, she has materials, and she is willing to do a session with some interested people after she gets back. It's the 30th and 31st of May, is that correct?
Right.
And so, she would, you know, have the office closed for those, those two days. And what was the cost of it, Mary?
$400.
Yeah.
It's a Wednesday and a Thursday, but you don't have a Monday meeting following that.
Right. So, we're not putting an agenda together. I mean, my own sense is, you know, it's worth it just to get those materials and to then have a session with sort of interested parties to talk, I mean, talk about what we learned there, but also talk about, you know, how things are going and what we should do in terms of organizing that.
Okay.
Make sense?
Sounds good.
So, a motion to approve Mary's attendance at that?
So moved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions?
No.
All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Then, I think we will just await the. Do you have a copy of the bylaw that, great, thank you. Excellent.
Do you want me to have a couple of copies of that bylaw?
We'll just wait a couple more minutes to start at the appointed hour, in case there are others who are interested in coming and around the way.
Zoning bylaws or general bylaws?
General bylaws. I think the hour is upon us. We've asked people to come here in response to a cease and desist order that we filed asserting the importation of earth to a certain project at 104 Crosby Road, required filing under our like-kind soil bylaw. And there you have it. Would the owners of the property, the proponents of the project, like to speak through the issue?
My name is Christopher Yates. I'm the attorney for the property owners. I work at Fletcher, Tilton, and Worcester. We have a copy of your stop order, your cease and desist order. We are under the impression and belief that this bylaw doesn't apply to us, because we are, all soil that was brought to the property was, was originated from within Berlins, so it's not being transported into the town from any other town. It comes from within the town limits.
And where did that come from, do you know?
Yes, it came from River Road in Berlins, 245 River Road.
245.
We have the, we have the trucking receipts showing where it came from to. We also have a letter from the contractor who transported it.
Want to take a look at these?
Sure.
So, no soil on that property, on that property came from outside of town limits.
Thank you. Bear with us for a minute while we.
Sure.
This is Amy Cressel. This is.
Town Council.
Town Council.
The receipts don't indicate the amount. It's just the truck that came in, time it started and the time it was finished.
Just for my own edification, roughly how much are we talking about in terms of truckloads or cubic yards or?
I believe at present, it's about 1,500 to 2,000 cubic yards, but correct me if I'm wrong. Is that correct?
Yes. So, 15?
15, between 1,500 and 2,000 cubic yards.
And this says 2,574 yards was trucked, so.
Said 2,574, is that what you're reading?
Yes. This says yards.
Cubic, yeah.
So, in cubic yards.
Yeah. This being the letter, not the bill?
Yeah, so sorry. It says that, this is the letter, and it says structural fill total to date, 2,574 yards was trucked in by Natural Landscape and Purchase from Clear Summit and Berlins Stone. And then, it says, later in the letter, it says, the total fill to date is 1,300 yards that has been brought into the site. It's a little confusing.
Can I give you clarity on that? Yes. This is the builder, Charles Freeman.
Structural fill is a completely different thing than the like-kind soil that you requested. Structural fill is underneath of the house box, and like-kind soil is going around the house box. Those are two different types of fill.
So, you're saying 1,000 cubic yards?
About 1,300 yards of the fill that there, you were struck, the struck work order there, that they're trying to strike work order was the like-kind soil, which is the fill that goes around the house box.
So, there's 1,300 cubic, so there's 1,300 cubic yards of fill around the house?
Correct.
1,000 under the house box?
No, it's about 2,500 under the house box.
Okay.
Okay, I'm starting to get slightly confused here.
So, it's.
The 2,574 figure that's spoken here, does that include both types?
No.
No. Okay.
It's riprap. It's about five to six inches of heavy stone underneath grade, and then, you got structural fill, one and a half inch minus is on the house box.
Okay.
That's prevent the house from moving, so that's the structural fill.
Yep, yep. And these bills of lading apply not to that or to that?
They, the bills of lading are applied just for, just for the like-kind soil brought in from in-town off Berlins Road.
So, you're.
You really wouldn't know, because there's no.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no. And I understand, I'm just trying to figure out what you're purporting that they, these represent. So, these three do not relate to the structural fill?
Correct.
Okay. Those three, you're saying, relate to the like-kind soils that have been brought in?
Correct.
Okay. And you're saying that 1,300 cubic yards have been brought in pursuant to those three bills of lading thus far? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay.
All from within the town of Berlins. Anything that's on that site has come from within the town of Berlins, whether it's the, the structural or the grading.
And the, the site where it came from, and I, you know, that has not, you know, what I want to be sure, and be sure that we document, and we may want to document other things, but I would want to document that that did not represent, you know, material that had been, you know, transshipped at some point from outside.
No, it's all virgin soil.
Hmm? Okay. Again, I'd like to see that documented at, you know, at the source, and that may not be the only thing we want documented, but I'd, I'd like to see that, because we have had situations, particularly in the, you know, older gravel pits along River Road, where things had been shipped in, and some of it, frankly, not necessarily the most attractive stuff. You know, in the past, and I just, you know, I just want to be sure that we're not, you know, that we, we are dealing with virgin soils from that site, and not stuff that has gotten shipped in in the interim. shipped in in the interim.
So what I, what I see is, I guess, we have this letter from Stephen S. Cardoso. It's not attested to, it's not signed under the penalties of perjury or anything like that. If they cannot come up with...
And that, that's you who removed the soil, correct? It's not, it's not the entity that owns the soil, you know, it's not, if you will, the originator, it's the receiver of the soil that, you've signed this letter, correct?
I did, yes, I did.
Yes, and you're the receiver of the soil.
So, so what we would need is, we would need either some kind of chain of custody, some kind of a bill of lading that actually states, there's lines here that say stone, gravel, loaned fill, they're all, every single one is blank except for, this one has, it's fill, but it has 15, I don't, they're...
That shows how many trucks they own.
Crosshatches, so...
How many trucks?
The lines you're talking about, that's the truckloads. That's how they mark them.
So we would need to know, what we would need is some kind of either chain of custody, bill of lading. If that's not possible, the board could consider an affidavit from the source?
Yes.
Not from the recipient, as you had pointed out.
Right.
I would suggest that if the concern is the origination of the actual soil, that that also be included in the affidavit, that the soil came from such and such property?
Right, and was not transshipped to that, to that property.
Right, not was sitting there in a huge pile, because then we don't know where...
Yep, okay.
I guess the other, so I guess the other question would be, what is the actual amount of fill that's on, that's on the property? I can say that when I drove by there three weeks ago, I think, there was significant amount of fill piled to the side.
The pile that you're seeing on that site right now is, was not transported to the site. That pile is from digging out the foundation.
So that would be helpful to know, and to know how much that is, how much soil, how much fill is sitting right there.
That's all loom that we're removing.
Could I, could I?
That's the build on the site, it came very low.
Could we just find out how much there is there that's being stored there? So then we could figure out, so we could take, if that's the case, then we could take that away, and then we could figure out what the like-kind soil is that was brought to the property and how much it was.
The amount, okay.
Yes.
Right, okay.
So in, within the town of Berlin, when anybody transports soil, are they held to this standard if they were transporting it within the town of Berlin? Because if you, if it doesn't trigger the permit unless you're transporting it without, a question that I would have is why are we being held to this standard and other people are not?
I think that, and I'll allow counsel to correct me if I'm wrong, but we're just trying to establish, you know, reasonably that in fact this soil originates from within Berlin. That, it's as simple as that.
That's fine, that's fine.
And my feeling is that anytime anybody moves something, I'm not talking about necessarily one truckload or something, but anytime that somebody moved a significant amount, we would be likely to say, where did it come from? And if the assertion is that it came from within Berlin, you know, document it in, you know, a straightforward and, you know, and reasonable way.
That's fine.
Yeah. Is that fair enough?
Correct.
Okay. So what, what I'm hearing thus far is we would like to have an affidavit from the originator of the soil, in other words, the owner of the site from whence it came, indicating the amount that was exported in cubic yards and...
Including what's under the, what's structural?
I think the amount of like-kind soil that was exported from that lot is what we're looking at.
Right.
Okay.
I would, I guess, perhaps we would need some kind of definition between the two because the, the bylaw itself references fill. Prior to the commencement of any fill deliveries, the applicant must provide to the board full documentation of the like-kind soil.
I would say, yes.
Whatever the fill is.
If this is what it purports to be, which is both the like-kind soil and the structural fill is originating at this, from this location on River Road, is that correct?
Correct.
Is that right?
The structural fill?
Yeah.
No.
No, that comes from outside?
The structural fill in the bylaws is unlimited, you have to be, you have to bring structural fill on.
Yeah, no, no, I hear you, I'm just, all I was, all I was suggesting is if the structural fill was coming from the same location?
No.
Then we got a simple answer here, we just say it all came from there and this is the amount, that, that was all.
Right, you got two separate kinds of structural fill there. You have some coming from Berlin Stone?
Yep, yep.
Okay. And you have some coming from Clear Summit?
Yep.
Which is in Lancaster.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And then you have...
And you got the outside fill of the perimeter of the house?
Mm-hmm.
Which is the like-kind soil.
Yep, okay.
I'm not sure I see a distinction. Again, the purpose is, this bylaw is intended to provide reasonable local regulation of the importation into the town of soils or fill?
Mm-hmm.
That shall herein be known as like-kind soils in the interest of protecting health. So...
I believe structural is specifically excluded though.
Is it? I mean, in capital letter C, small letter, C1A, it says, "Construction projects, there shall be a one-to-one relationship between square feet of building area of the project and the cubic feet of such fill." For example, if fill is required to support and enable the construction, it sounds to me like it might be, but if you, if you have it in here that it's not, I, I mean, that could be something that you could also provide to the board if that is your position.
Okay. We can do that? I did see in one of the bylaws, I just can't find it on the phone.
So it could be in the, it could be in the import and export bylaw, which does not apply to this property because this property is, because that only applies to commercial.
Yeah, just let me take a quick look myself.
Regardless though, it would be, this bylaw pertains to soil being imported from out of town.
Right.
If the structural support...
The stuff that would come from Clear Summit that he was indicating would...
Yeah, it would be, it would be well under any limits, and everything else is from within town, so we should be fine.
I'm confused about that. What are the limits?
This bylaw only pertains to what is being imported from out of town.
Correct.
So we can attest to anything structural that came in from company in Lancaster? What's the name again?
Clear Summit.
Clear Summit. For the structural, for underneath the foundation, and then...
And that's fill?
That's structural support, yeah.
It's fill, correct.
It's structural support, structural material, not fill.
Fill is what, fill is what you would, what you would bring in and spread around the foundation. Structural support is what goes underneath the foundation.
And how is that not fill, if you could just explain?
It's structural support. Fill is what you fill the yard with. Structural support is what you use to build the house.
I mean, not necessarily, because fill comes in different sizes, it comes in different quarter-inch stone, all kinds of things. I'm not sure you can make that distinction.
Okay, but I guess another thing I would say is, any house built in Berlin, do you require these permits for the structural fill coming in for underneath the house, for every single house being built? We would just want to be held to the same standard that everybody else is held to.
I think that the concern was already addressed, but there was, there's significant amount, I think, that came in, and the origin was not known. So I think that, I think that you should probably figure out what is fill, or maybe provide some kind of precedent as to what is structural support and what is fill.
Well, I suppose we could just look at all the other building permits pulled in the last couple of years in town and see what...
Well, obviously, those aren't precedent-setting.
What precedent is being set for other builders in town? I mean...
Well, but that won't get far, I mean, that, you can't rely on what building permits were already issued. There's an issue, you know, right here, what the board is addressing now is 104 Crosby Road. And again, I still don't see any, any, any kind of exemption for structural, but perhaps
Again, like, the soil that came, is coming in, or the material that's coming in from out of town is the structural material that's underneath the house. We can sign any sort of affidavit saying how much was taken, or how much was brought in and placed under the, where the foundation is known. That's not a problem whatsoever.
And also what, I think, what type it was?
And then the remaining is all within town, so I don't see us having any problem complying with anything you want us to sign.
Right, okay. Well, I mean, I think, I think what we're suggesting is that this, we really, and again...
Do you want to see the receipts from, from Clear Summit now, right now?
No, not just, not just, not just right now, but let me, I think we sort of have two, two trains running here. One is the train demonstrating that what appears to be a fairly significant proportion of this comes from within the town. And I think we've talked about what we're looking at, and again, we can, you know, we can give you formal notes on this, but I think what we're talking about here is getting an affidavit under power, you know, under penalties of perjury from the originator of the soil, indicating the amount, you know, that, that was exported. And I think we're talking at this point about all that was exported from that site. And further attesting to the fact that those soils, you know, originated on that and were not the result of transshipment from, you know, from other, from other towns. Okay, so that's, that's the train running, you know, on stuff that, that originated within town, and that's what you'd have to do, give us to demonstrate the fact that in fact it's exempt from the bylaw because it originates from within the town. We good, we good on that? That one? Okay. And then the, the second is that we are contending that all fill brought in in this project is, fill is defined, you know, in, in the bylaw, so that therefore we would request an application to import the amounts that came from Clear Summit in Lancaster. And that the application that's submitted with regard to that should comply with the application requirements in Section F of the bylaw. And again, counsel, anytime I start talking rubbish, please let me know.
Unless we can show the bylaw suggests it's exempt.
Unless you can show that the bylaw suggests that that is exempt, yes. And that, unless, you know, and until the documentation that we've, you know, indicated is, is provided with respect to what came from within the town, and unless and until you can demonstrate that the bylaw does not apply to that which was imported from Clear Summit, or that the bylaw doesn't apply, that the cease and desist would continue to apply. That make sense?
Thank you.
So that's, that's where we are.
What's your next scheduled meeting?
Our next scheduled meeting is next week. And let me look at the... So today, being the 14th, we will meet on the 21st, and we will meet on the 29th. Those are the next two meetings that we have. Okay?
And what are the hours of operation of your building, office, building inspector, the building department?
I'm in at 6:00 in the morning, and I'm here until 7:30 at night. I'm not in the office between 8 noon, Monday through Thursday.
So after noon, Monday through Thursday?
Yep.
And, yes, and then just for your reference, if we get out beyond that, we do not meet on the 4th of June. We start every other week meeting in June, okay?
Mm-hmm.
But that gives, you know, that takes you out the next two weeks. After that, the next meeting would be the 11th.
To speed up the process, does counsel have the form of affidavit that you would like signed?
I don't. I think it would be a standard affidavit, signed under the Payne's penalty of perjury, but just to, exactly what Mr. Chairman stated, I don't think he missed anything.
Again, that they're the originator, you know, of the soil, the amount exported, that the amounts originated from the site and were not the result of, of transshipment from abroad, you know, from outside of the town. That's simply an affidavit under, you know, that's under penalties of perjury, and those items, be sure we get, you know, the amount and that the amount is not going to be something that we're going to have trouble applying, you know, to the plan. Okay? So just sure you get the amount right in that. Okay?
Is that everything we need in? I think so.
Okay.
Correct.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
Do you know how much more fill is going to be required? And if all the fill that's required to go around that building is coming from the site here?
All fill that is going to that site is coming from Berlin.
Do you know how many more cubic yards?
I don't off the top of my head, no.
Guys, do you know?
Yeah?
How many more?
Looking at 8,000 yards.
Okay.
It's all from within Berlin, so it's exempt from the bylaw.
And again, when we get that affidavit and the amount, you know, just be sure the amount covers what you bring, so it's eight...
It would be coming from River Road though.
Okay, all right, if it's from a separate originator, then you have to get the same thing, huh?
It would be coming from BJ's.
Okay, then you have to get, obviously, if you have a second originator, we have to get a similar affidavit from that originator.
Even though it's coming from within town?
Yes, this is, this is, as I say, this was the train that is demonstrating that it came from within town. You with me? That's what we're doing with respect to River Road. Now they're saying there's material coming from another site within town, and all we're saying is, yes, let's get the same affidavit.
What?
Because this is a significant amount of fill.
Yeah.
And I think, just, you know, to save you, you know, a huge amount of time, you know, digging around in the inspector's office, I think we're talking about thousands of yards of fill in a bylaw that has only been around for, you know, a few years, there's not going to be a lot of application of that. And I certainly would feel that any, anybody bringing in, you know, this, this amount of fill would be treated this way. Okay?
So going forward, you're going to require these affidav... So going forward, you're going to require these affidavits?
Yes, you know...
Or there could be chain of custody or bill of lading, something showing more than this.
Again, reasonable...
So, as far as future fill, how do we attest to what we're going to do in the future? So we would...
Well, what I'm saying here is, and again, if what you're... You know, let's say it comes from the BJ's site.
Yeah.
What we're saying is take exactly the same kind of affidavit that we've just talked about with respect to River Road, exactly the same points that attesting that they're the originator of the soil, the amount exported, that it doesn't represent amounts that were transshipped from outside the town.
After we move it?
It would have to be done before.
Yeah, I would say before you. You have a cease and desist now.
No, I mean, so we deal with this, we get the cease and desist lifted?
Yep.
We start building the house?
Yep.
And then, when additional fill needs to come in, we sign an affidavit that we will be moving X amount of fill from another location?
I guess what I would suggest is you know, I mean, you know where the rest of this is coming from. You say it's coming from BJ's, right? Or is it coming from a third?
No. Well, it's a long process.
Yeah, no, that's fine. It's early in the evening.
It's... A lot of it's going to be coming from BJ's, but I'm going to tell you right now, BJ's, Benderson will not sign off on it. Because of what's going on?
Because of what's going on?
Risk of a lawsuit.
Yes. They will not...
I'm saying, nobody wants to sign that letter.
Yeah, but we would sign the affidavit saying that we're taking it from BJ's.
Well, we said...
I'll videotape it.
No, the affidavit's coming from the originator, from where it was originated.
The originator is not willing to say that it was not transshipped, essentially.
They got multi-million dollar lawyers that don't want to get involved.
And again, you understand that, you know, particularly in a site where there's, you know, there's been a, frankly, a shitload of stuff that's moved around up there, not to be able to get a simple attestation that that originates from, you know, that location and was not shipped in otherwise, I mean, you know, it just, it seems to be reasonable to request that if we're asking people to establish the fact that this came from...
It's the reason we have it.
From Berlin, yeah.
Why can't the trucking company say that's where it came from?
Again, one of the points we're asking for, and this is why it's important to get it from the originator, is stuff gets shipped in to places and stored.
Yes.
You know, and a trucker picking it up. You know, in all good faith can say, "I'm picking it up there. I get it."
Right.
But, you know, it's the originator who knows where that comes in, and frankly, Benderson should know that stuff.
Right, which everybody should know here, that the material that was up from BJ's, it came from that mountain and was just brought over, correct?
That's my presumption, but I haven't spent five years on the top of that mountain looking at dirt, you know?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Technically, some of it came from Hudson, then. Technically, some of it came from Hudson, then.
Yes, we did, however, have an agreement that very, you know, with the earth. At that time, I think it even predated this bylaw, but we did say that we would treat all material that came from that site as originating from Berlin, because obviously it was very...
I'm familiar with that agreement, I was on board with that in Hudson when that was...
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, and I want to be fair to people, and, you know, if it came from that site, we're not going to quibble with the fact that it came from Hudson or it came from Berlin, so we're...
So, you're all right there?
As long as it came from the site, exactly. Exactly.
Okay.
That's what we need from that, that it came from the Highland Commons site, okay?
Exactly, right.
Okay?
Yes.
That's the attestation of origination we need from that. And I would think that they can say, yes, that originated from that site, because you know what? If they can't attest that, then they're violating agreements that they've had with both towns for, you know, for a long time, if they have an adequately...
I think we'll be able to get Benderson to attest to that. There's a lot of...
Now I understand your concern. No, we're not looking to see whether it was Hudson or Berlin. If it originated on that site, we're good with that. Okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
But all of this should be submitted prior to any...
Further importation?
Yes.
And I think what we said was that, you know...
Any further transport, because we're not importing.
Transport.
Right.
Transport, yes.
But it should be done prior, not when they decide, you know, in a month from now, if they decide to bring in more fill. This should all be done upfront. They should be able to know how much fill they need.
And that's what I'm saying, is if you know, okay, that all the rest of it is coming from...
BJ's.
BJ's?
Yes.
Then let's get that affidavit, let's get the amount, so that we get the whole thing done, we lift the cease and desist order, and it'll apply to that amount and that source, et cetera. Okay, so that's the stuff that comes from Berlin.
Yes.
And the other stuff, I think we have an understanding that we view that as imported, as subject to the bylaw, and you have to give us an application consistent with the provisions of subsection F of that bylaw, unless you can show us to your satisfaction, our satisfaction. I'm sure your satisfaction, we find, but our satisfaction, if the bylaw doesn't apply.
Steve Paul has that. Steve Paul has. He's the one that showed me that, just say no.
Okay. All right?
Bill is not applied. We'll get that supposed to be...
Are there any other comments, questions, anything to be brought before the board?
That's what they said.
Yep, okay.
If I could just make a quick comment?
Of course!
About the soils for other buildings and stuff going on?
Yeah.
Soil conditions are different all over town. You can dig in one place and 10 feet away, it's something else. So depending what that particular site needs decides whether or not the material needs to be brought in, structural fill or whatnot, to support the structure. It may not be needed if you can use your spoil piles right on the side of the site and backfill with that. So, just for future reference, not every building in town is going to require transportation of soils if the soil conditions meet the requirements needed to construct a building.
And, you know, and obviously, if somebody's just moving stuff around within a site, we have not traditionally asked people to, you know, document that it came from within town, you know, because it's never gotten in a truck, it's never gone, you know what I mean? But once, you know, once it's coming from one place to another, then we're trying to document that.
So, on that vein, the pile that's there that came from the site, is that going to be utilized?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. There any other comments or concerns? Does conservation have any concerns, or...
Not yet.
Okay? Okay? All right, then. Anything else?
No, I think we covered it.
All righty.
I'm all set, thank you.
Yeah, so we're good.
Do you have a card on you?
Yes.
So thank you all for coming in. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
And thank you, yes.
Can I ask a quick question on another matter?
Of course.
Okay. There are two of those traps for the Asian beetles on my part of Linden Street.
Yeah.
But I just wondered why they were there. Just their monitoring sites, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, I know they're, I mean, I don't know specifically, and I haven't read an update like this year, but I've certainly seen stuff.
They are monitoring sites. There is nothing found in town still.
Okay.
But last year, they notified the town. They did the same this year, but now they're saying we're not at Fan Fair. There's nothing found in town.
Because I saw a report for that.
I don't remember seeing anything on it, and all of a sudden, they were there.
Yeah. All righty.
So you're all set with me?
I think we are. Thank you very much, Amy.
Okay.
And Amy, maybe we'll ask you to quickly review the minutes of this one, so that, you know, you can comment.
Sure, no problem.
Yeah.
And I'll be in touch once we get some information submitted by the applicant. We can be in touch.
All righty.
All right, thank you.
Thanks very much. All right. We'll return to our regularly scheduled programming here. All right, I think the next, I haven't even got...
Do we want to put these in the folder here, or...
Yeah, could you put, yeah, I'll put these, these are what they have given us. I'll put them in the appointments folder, and I'll paperclip them to the, okay? All righty. All right. Next, we have three applicants for the Mabel Marvel Scholarships, Victoria Cowell, Megan O'Day, and Piper Wisaki. We have a $3,000 award pool, and I think that we might want the record to show that one selectman will recuse themselves from this consideration.
I have to say, I looked at the applications, and I think each of them is very deserving. Sounds like they're going to be working hard.
Yes.
And if you're ready, I can make a motion to approve the, each applicant get $1,000?
I'm willing to accept that as the motion and second it.
All right.
And I would only say in further discussion that I completely agree with you, having had a chance to quickly thumb through these, so I think it's a great thing.
We've had some really good applicants over the years.
We have indeed.
Yeah.
We have indeed. So, if there are no other comments or questions, I would accept a vote to award $1,000 to each of the three applicants.
Okay.
Aye.
All right. Aye. There you go. And I don't think there's any harm in your signing them, because the record shows that you recused yourself from the votes, and, you know, there's really a congratulatory and notification letter at this point, so... There you go.
How are things going, Joe?
Good.
Good?
Yeah, things are going well.
Great.
Got things caught up today after vacation, so...
Ah, yes.
95 emails, so...
Oi.
Oh, there you go. And how's the juggling going? Pretty good?
Okay.
Yeah?
Awesome. I haven't heard anything. We had one kerfuffle, which always happens the first, you know, day or so that you have a new arrangement in place. It's just, you know, the way the world tests us, but I think I haven't heard anything negative or anything like that after that, so that's great. Okay, next, we have the signing of our alternate energy provider, the Competitive Electric Service Agreement between Constellation New Energy and the Town of Berlin. This, would you like to speak to this one for a moment?
This is the new aggregation contract. It is just longer because, basically because our term is so much longer, it's a little bit more complicated than it was in the past.
And you want to just tell us briefly what this affords us?
This will give us a 40-month contract with Constellation Energy. I can't remember the exact numbers right off the top of my head, but it does start off definitely lower than the standard rate. Our hope is that it will maintain over the next three years, particularly in the wintertime, it should be lower. There may be times where it may spike up in the winter. Citizens do have an option if that happens and goes above the standard rate to switch over to national grid temporarily if they want to.
And that's in the winter, not the summer?
In the winter, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Or, I'm sorry, I've got it backwards. In the summer, it drops. So, national grid could drop in the summer below the rate that we have, because we've taken a three-year rate. But in the winter, we should, in general, be below.
That's right, that's right.
Yep.
But I was out last week, so I didn't know something had changed.
Yep, that's exactly right.
Okay.
But on average, it should be lower over the next three years, so even if you stick with the rate, on average, it should average out over the years to be lower than the standard rate.
Yeah, and I think basically it will give, for those who want to more actively manage this, it will give, we believe, a number of months in which dependably this will give a lower energy cost alternative. And in the times when it doesn't, someone can opt out and go with national grid.
And as a bonus, we also managed to get green energy for the town at a reasonable rate.
And I think that's, yeah, I think that's fantastic. And I think it shows what's happening in the energy industry, that we can get a 40-month contract that, you know, appears as though it is going to be, on average, competitive and less than the normal provider, and it's from a green energy provider, so I think that's a fantastic thing. And I think the Energy Committee did a great job in putting this together. And now we have to re-execute this at this point, okay? I take a motion to that effect.
So moved. Second.
All right. Any further comments or questions?
Nope.
All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now I'm going to need a little assistance in how to re-execute this, because it appears to have already been executed.
Is there a second, is there another page? Pass one that...
Yeah, that was the signature page, and if you go to the green tabs, Tom.
Oh, sorry. Okay, but the sign here, I don't do anything on that page?
Flip past that.
Okay. Okay, I don't see a signature on the green.
Was it...
I don't know whether I have to initial, or...
They want that initial.
Okay, cool. All right, I'm sorry, I was looking...
That's okay, they want that.
Okay, I'm sorry, that was folded over, and I was looking for a signature.
No, no.
And then they want original blue ink signature?
Yeah, but that's not, they want that initialed, and they want these signed. I think you're going to have to sign.
That's fine, I can do that. I can, yeah, I mean, I can do this and sign with original and all that.
Yeah, and redate it. I think they still want it dated the 8th, though. I think he said they wanted that.
I can initial the date, you know? Okay? All right, so what I'm going to do is re-execute these, initial the date as well, so that they, you know, okay? Okay? And then initial on those other points. I'm sorry, I was looking for a signature, and the initialing was folded over. All right. That's one copy. That's one copy. Okay, well, that, hopefully she'll do it. Okay. Next, we have, um, the extension for the Green Community Grant. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's that. All right. Next, um, we have the Administrative Consent Order. We've spoken about this before with the library, we'd gone, you know, back and forth. The last, uh, issues that, you know, we had were to get due dates out there, you know, sufficiently, uh, out there so that we had, uh, monies to spend on the well or so after the 1st of July, and we've gotten the dates out there to, I think, a point that are reasonable. And, uh, the other key thing that I wanted to get in there was to memorialize that in the event that, um, alternate sewage disposal is, uh, required on the site, that, um, DEP would allow a tight tank, you know, on that site. Again, the purpose of this was before we, uh, you know, proceed with spending, you know, more money on that location, we wanna be sure that, uh, you know, we have actually a viable location in terms of water supply and septic disposal. So, uh, we've, uh, I've reviewed this, um, I think, uh, it does have some commitments. We will, within 30 days, have to have the water tested for sort of basic bacteria and so on. The list of things are actually fairly clear in here, but I think, uh, we probably need to get together with Keith, um, Joe, maybe yourself. And, uh, you know, probably do that sometime later this week so that we can get that initial testing. There are three phases of testing, but the only one that has to be done in the first 30 days are the sort of, you know, the, the really base level, you know, bacteria test. So we should
Is, uh, Tom Steele doing the?
Well, Tom Steele has done it, but there are also private
Okay, 'cause I know
You know, funds that are doing it.
I believe this is the last week for him because
Yep. So, we, yeah. We can talk to him, but there are also, you know, private
Yeah.
I know, uh, for instance, uh, it, uh, we seem to be in the sites of, uh, DEP because they were at the church for testing, and we had, uh, a testing service that operates out of Bolton, who, you know, is doing the test on a reasonable basis, so if, you know, if, if Tom Steele or somebody else isn't available in town, we can, you know, we can do that, and we can, you know, charge that to municipal building expense. That initial test is not terribly expensive, it's just a back, you know, the bacteria
Right.
etc., so. Okay?
Okay.
And that is the only one that has to be done in this fiscal year, so.
Okay, I think Tom, like I said, might be available this week.
Yep, okay.
So maybe he can do that one, and
Yep.
Then we can figure out a plan for going
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can even chat with people tomorrow, okay?
Okay.
All right, so, um, a motion, uh, to approve the terms of the ACO, and again, the point of this is that, the ACO has obligations to the town, but it also binds the Commonwealth, so that, uh, if we adhere to the terms of the order, then notwithstanding the fact that we have something that doesn't fully conform, uh, to the regulations, they can't pull the rug out from underneath us, so that, you know, that's really the, the trade-off here. We make some, uh, you know, we, we've, we created some obligations, but we create a safe harbor for us going forward on that property, so.
So, motion to sign the document by the chair.
Second.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Oh, that's what it was. Yeah, there we go. That's all done? Okay?
There's only one, right?
There's two.
I want a signature, though, on that.
Oh, yes, only one. Yep. Okay. We've already done the, uh, CPO training, and, uh, I checked the yes here for you, Mary.
Okay.
Okay? All right, sitting as Personnel Committee, we've got a couple of, uh, of things. One is to approve the reclassification of Rose Pierce from Assessor Assistant Administrator to Assistant to the Assessor, retroactive to February 26, 2018. This represents, you know, sort of a promotion from
Right.
above to cover a, uh, retirement. This will, uh, this will result in her moving from a fiscal year 18, uh, grade six, step eight, it's 2185, to a fiscal year grade eight, step nine for the, um, for the, the remainder of, of this year. And again, retroactive to February 26th, 'cause that's what we're being asked to do. Uh, and then, uh, we're also approving, in the next fiscal year, uh, a step raise beyond that, to a step 10, which would be 2556 an hour.
Starting July 1?
That would be starting July 1. So we're doing both of those.
All right.
Both of those things, okay?
Like a motion to approve?
Uh, I would love it.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Just, I, what the, can you explain to me?
Sure. Um, she's moving, you know, basically from one position to a higher position in the department.
Okay, because we had someone leave?
Because we had somebody retire, so it's an, you know, internal promotion. Um, they, she wants this effective February 26th, okay? And
Since she's been doing the job
Since she's been doing the job
Since she's been doing the job since then. Um, that would mean that during this fiscal year, um, she would be a, um, grade seven, step nine, because that's the position she's been moved into. And so we are approving that from February 28th to, you know,
June 30th.
To June 30th. And then, we are approving, as of next year, because we've obviously already approved next year's stuff for a lot of people. Um, we're approving that as of July 1st, she would go up a step from that, um, during next fiscal year. You with me?
Yep.
Okay?
I did just want a question. Most people just got a cost of living adjustment. So is this, how does this correlate? I guess is what I'm asking.
Um, well, the, I, my, my understanding is that that 25, um, even it's, even if it were step nine, would have the cost of living adjustment in it, but this is giving her an extra step. If you wish to, um, question her on that, uh, we could do that, but that's what that's the effect of it.
And then, I'd sort of like to We approved the advertisement and the job description for
The Assessor Assistant. The one that is opening up and she moves out. Yes.
Okay. But we didn't do this part, but.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if we should remain consistent, since most people got just the
Some people, most people, not everyone.
Not everyone, but
Yeah.
almost everyone. I'm just wondering if we should remain consistent with that.
I don't mind going back and suggesting that, uh, that this go to, uh, that this remain at step nine. There will still be
With the COLA?
I mean
There will still be, I mean, if, if you're in step nine and you didn't get a step raise, there's still a COLA that applies to, uh
And that's what, I guess, like I said, most people just got a COLA, so I'm wondering if we keep this and just do a COLA.
Okay, so why don't we do this? Because maybe we can save a step, okay?
Okay.
No pun intended. Why don't I cross this out? And why don't we approve the step nine? And Mary, do you have that? Can we look at that?
Grid.
The, the grid and look at, um, that way, we can approve this, and then she can come back and ask us to reconsider it.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if there's a merit Some sort of merit.
Yep. Well, I mean, it is
That makes sense, I just, there, there's sort of this automatic thing
It is an increase from, you know, 2185 an hour to 25 something an hour, which is, is, you know, considerable chunk of change, so. All righty, so I'm looking at 79. It's here, too?
2568.
In fiscal year 19?
Yep.
79 is 2568?
Yep.
And do we have what, what it was in, uh, 18? Just out of curiosity?
A nine, what was it?
A grade seven
Seven.
Step nine.
25 even.
Okay. So you said, sorry, uh, so, for fiscal year 19, it's 2568, did you say?
Yep. Yep, 2568.
Okay, that's more than she has here anyway.
Okay.
So.
Really?
Yes. Okay, so.
So maybe we need to go back with Becky?
No, 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 I think she had
Did she just have?
She didn't draft that, I did.
Okay, all right, um.
I might have, might have, I might have
No, no, that's fine, um, so, so therefore, what this would read is, um, and maybe we just oughta, you know, oughta, uh, correct this. So what this will now read is fiscal year 18.
Okay.
Seven, step nine, 25 even an hour, and you just confirmed that that's the case for 18?
Yep.
Okay? And then fiscal year 19, we'll put in grade seven, keep it at step nine.
Okay.
And we just confirmed that she, that this was originally written at 2556, but it's actually 2568.
Yeah, but if you look, turn the page and look at what she's asking for, she is asking for her to get the increase that Jill would've got had she stayed.
I understand.
Okay, well, so I, yeah, I understand, you're tamping it down and keeping it steady at the same step.
Exactly.
Okay.
But, and what I'm saying is, we're actually
Because
We're actually voting a figure that was higher than the one that was presented here, but anyway. So, I would suggest we do this. If she comes back and has, you know, a real, uh, real question, uh, or issue about it, we can reconsider it, but I think doing this, we can save the step if they're pretty okay with this, so. All right, so, everybody understand what we're doing?
Yep.
Okay. But, you do. Talking about too long. It's getting late. All right, so, uh, a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, basically the promotion to, um, grade seven, step nine, and, uh, you know, the payment in accordance with, uh, the pay rate for each of those fiscal years.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All right. Please.
I love it when it's
I'll still ask for it, but please no. Uh, any further comments or questions?
No.
Okay. Hearing, uh, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Mary, I think it was probably easier if we just, uh,
Yeah.
I just give that to you, we can
I like consistency.
I can just electronically sign it and just change that number once you want it signed. You said it didn't even need such a thing today.
Yeah, no, no, it really, I mean, it's the vote, our vote that does it, you know, so
Yeah, okay.
I think that's good. Excellent. All right, and next, um, we request, uh, Marty Miller is doing, uh, senior work off for being a, uh, town photographer. He, um, is doing work in various, you know, departments, committees, meetings, whatever. And it was suggested by Peggy Sardell, and I was inclined to agree that it's probably wise to, like, pull these things together. So I would like to suggest that, um, he would work off under the, uh, supervision of the Board of Selectmen, and that the, um, method by which we keep track of this is that boards who use his services should email the selectmen and indicate that they have used his services for a certain number of hours. Okay?
Okay.
Motion to that effect? And maybe we can get out of here.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All right, any other comments or questions?
No.
All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else to come before the board?
Yes, actually, um, maybe you wanna just do this one? The, um, dollar buyback, as long as you just walked in.
Okay. By the way, you killed the battery truck.
I killed the battery on the truck.
Yeah, whole set.
Oh, dear.
So
My keys.
Supposedly in the truck. So we did receive the final buyback from National Grid for the Town Street Light.
Yes.
This is the final, final pricing, which is $1.
Oh, you say? Mm-hmm. Okay, $1.
$1.
Okay.
So, we would like, the Energy Committee would like to ask the Board of Selectmen to sign the final, final document, so that we can return that to National Grid, and that will allow us to enter into a memorandum of understanding with MAPC.
And where is this document?
Uh, it should be, it's in soft copy for sure.
Yeah. I have, you got it? You said you were gonna put it on the agenda for
Oh, I didn't. Okay.
But it's, you have it.
It should be, it's definitely, Mary has it, and I think you
Okay, and so what this document says is that we will buy them back for a dollar?
Yes, basically. There, there's three of them that say that, and it's, you know, kinda in triplicate, but that is the gist of it.
Does that mean $3?
No. So there, there are some, there are some things that need to happen in addition to we will buy for a dollar.
Right.
We need a, um, 24-by-7 access number, should there be an emergency. What, uh, National Grid will do, if one of the lights are damaged, broken, pole destroyed, whatever, they will make it safe, that's their terms, and they will leave our asset on the ground next to the destroyed pole, and then it's on us to
Okay.
replace it, get back up.
And the 24-hour news could be the dispatch center?
That's what I was hoping, I haven't been able to talk to Tom yet, and yet
I think it can be any of those.
Okay.
That's the only 24/7 we have, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Unless the Wisaki asshole wants to keep the
Not so much.
The phone on the bedside table or something.
Been there, done that. And the other piece of it is a customer service number, which allows people to "Street lamps out, street lights pointing in my bedroom," whatever, so that would be
Please don't place the one in front of my house.
That would be a business hours only.
Yeah. I would say give the selectmen
Okay. And then the last, very last piece is proof of insurance.
Proof of insurance? Okay?
Because, uh, as the owner of these assets, if one were to fall, or, you know, it could be
All right, well, we should notify, uh, Maya that we are acquiring these. Is there an effective date for this acquisition?
It would be, no, I don't know what the effective date is, I think
I just, I mean, just for purposes I just, I mean, just for purposes of insurance, that would be helpful to me.
Yeah.
Although I can see one of the catch-22s where, uh, they can't tell us the date that, uh, we own them unless we tell them the date when they're insured, and we can't get an insurance date until we know the date that we own them.
I can certainly...
I just see that coming down the road.
I could talk to Scott on that one.
So work on that, okay?
Let's see, what else? I think that's pretty much it. Oh, there is a time requirement. So I talked to Cara Goodman of MAPC, and they are foreseeing running out of money and closing the grant applications to new bidders. They would like, they strongly encouraged us to do this by the end of next month, and given that...
The end of June.
End of June.
Oh, yeah.
So we should be able to accomplish that, and that puts us in good position.
Good. Okay.
And then, one last thing?
Yeah.
Is I just, Elway's asked me to, oh, actually, to Joe, that the work with Guardian Energy regarding the building analytics has proven fruitful.
Oh, good.
It looks like they are able to give us everything that was actually in the contract. They will be taking the existing system out, replacing it on their own dime with a system that will do what it says it does. So, we wanted to let you know that any further action by your board, hopefully, is not necessary. And once we give them the go-ahead to proceed, they said they should be able to complete the work in 120 days.
Sounds wonderful. That's fantastic.
Cross your fingers.
Cross your fingers.
Yeah.
And that, I think, is it.
All righty, we're getting these things printed off, so we can sign them.
Getting this all handled, thank you.
Yeah, wow.
Apparently hasn't been easy.
Goes, he, this is one of my bad cops. I was a good cop. Greg Trumeling was, I, I have to give credit to Greg. Greg?
Wow, yeah.
Wow, he just took this by the horns, and so impressive, so I...
Fantastic.
So thank you, Dan.
Thank you, oh, man.
The board.
That's it, thank you.
All righty, thanks. While we're, uh, waiting for those signatures, I had forgotten we have this, um, oh, yes, I think you guys already voted it, right? This is the, uh, Cultural Highway Support Letter.
Yeah, we thought we'd let you have it.
Cool, yeah, good, so that's fine. All right.
Do we need to make a motion to... Do the document, and Mary sign it?
Um, yeah, I was just waiting to see it, so I could refer to it.
Okay.
The other thing, um, which wasn't on here, was Lucy getting reimbursed for her software. We really want to go with that.
Can we put it on the next agenda, or is that...
I think we can.
How much was it?
$75, I think is what it was. It was like 70 or 75.
Remind me why that was such a difficulty.
Apparently, there was an issue with the fact that it was on her machine, and that it's her Office 365, not specifically Publisher, though you can't get them separately.
Is there more that you can do in Publisher than you can in Word?
Yes.
Yeah.
Significantly, in order to get that newsletter look without, you know, banging your head against a wall.
Yeah, otherwise, yeah, it, it allows you to work in sort of discrete blocks and move them around, as opposed to things like moving from page to page and column to column the way it does in Word.
Okay.
Now, trust me...
I thought you could do that kind of thing in Word, too.
Well, you, you can, but not...
It's really...
It's really hard.
Yeah, no, I, I, I know, because I do bulletins from time to time at the church, and it's really tedious. It's possible, but...
Basically, all of this comes together. You get, you get Office 365, and Publisher comes with it. It's not an extra thing that you add on. It all comes as a bundle.
Right. So is this, uh, my question to you guys, is this, is this precedent setting?
I don't think so.
Okay. Let's, uh, put it on the agenda for next... Okay, um, the, uh, we have a motion before us to, uh, execute an agreement of sale and, um, a license agreement, uh, for overhead electric service and attachments to utility poles for street and area lighting between Massa- Massachusetts Electric Company, doing businesses with National Grid and the town of Berlin. This is in connection with our purchasing the, uh, the streetlights. Uh, motion to approve?
So moved.
Any comments or, and it says it's an agreement of sale, and it's a license for, you know, maintaining those on, okay, and we're voting both at the same time.
All right.
So, any further comments or questions?
No.
All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So I can execute these? Anything else to come before the meeting?
Nope, I think I'm good. I, we already talked about the carpeting, because I spoke with Keith about it. Might as well give it a shot, the letter to Hudson, um, after that, uh, we'll see what else we can do.
We may just ask him to do it, you know?
Yeah, exactly. Right now, he is down, well, yes, he's down one man now, and he'll be down...
Did I see something in there, somebody doing part-time? So he is at least getting some help?
I believe he was working on it, see, unless he could hire. You saw it where?
I thought I saw a letter in the warrants that they, there was somebody.
Oh, okay, well, yes, you're right. I bet he probably does have someone that he can call occasionally as part-time, yeah.
Oh, and the other thing, IT actually did, um, vote on a vendor for the new website, so hopefully that project will be starting to move forward.
Cool. Good, who is it?
It's, uh, Virtual Towns and Schools.
Hmm?
Virtual Towns and Schools.
Oh, towns, not Townsend.
Nope, towns.
I was getting worried. Okay, towns and schools, okay.
So if you want to look, here's some samples of their sites. They're, they're pretty local. They're in Boxborough, which was one of the...
Nice.
So they are very familiar with all of Massachusetts idiosyncrasies.
All right.
How much? The thing we got made in chairs.
I can't remember the exact numbers. Um, it depends on whether you divide it up. It is significantly more than we pay now, because Garth only does this number, but I think it's maybe 3,500 is sticking in my head. Um, but it depends on whether you sign a contract or not. There's initial upfront cost for the conversion, and then there's a yearly cost, or you can spread it out over a contracted period.
Oh, that's the energy, yeah.
And people will do their own page updates and stuff like that, yeah.
All righty.
We do have a, uh, meeting on Wednesday, and the, you're good for the, um, May 30th to go to Devon's?
I think so.
Okay.
Do we have an 1870 Town Hall of Fame?
Actually, I'm pleasantly, uh, able to report that tomorrow we have the final inspection at 1:00 in the afternoon.
Oh, neat.
Yeah, um, so we don't have a meeting. However, if everything goes well, we'll get a TCO, and then once we hear back from the state, from the AAV, um, we'll be able to do a, a full occupancy, and the building will be open to the public.
So we'll get a TCO after the inspection's tomorrow?
Yeah, as, as long as everything works.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see if it, if it comes out right, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, so that's a good thing.
All righty.
And, uh, the barn, too, should be getting, uh, permanent occupancy soon.
Wow.
So, because that, they already have a TCO.
Yeah.
I believe, we're just waiting on the BDA system requirements on whether or not they need it or not.
Cool.
So, that's it, just minor things now.
Yay.
Amazing, awesome.
Yep, yep, everything's coming together.
So you're good, Lisa, for the 30?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, Echecion, Harvard?
Oh, good.
I do the address if you want.
We have, we get a, I get the email from there.
You should get an email with the person.
Okay.
Um, but it is, what, 13 Inter Road in Harvard. It's not very far. It's a lot closer than Devon's.
Okay.
If you have any problems, though, you can give me a call. All right.
All righty, anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.